Shelburne Town Council, Shelburne Town Hall, November twentieth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. The meeting was called to order by Town Council President Jesse K. Senior at six P M with council members Brad Cagle, Alex Morris, and John Curtis in attendance. Clerk Treasurer Melissa Copeland read the minutes of the meeting held on October tenth, twenty twenty-three, and the minutes from the meeting held on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Council members Brad Cagle and Alex Morris refused to sign the minutes from the October tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. They requested that Clerk Treasurer Melissa Copeland add a comment to the minutes as she supposedly had said. She stated that she did not see the comments they were making and that she has the recording of the last meeting if they would like to listen to it. They did not. Therefore, she told them she would not be changing the minutes until they refused to sign them. The minutes from the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting were approved and signed. Solomon County Treasurer's Office emailed every town council in the county and manufactured mobile home permit that residents must fill out and submit to the county on moving a new mobile home into Solomon County. The Treasurer's Office is requesting that the Shelburne Town Council add this as part of their trailer slash mobile home ordinance or instruction so that everyone will be in compliance with the state statutes. Councilmember Brad Cagle made a motion to add this as a side note to the current ordinance segment by Councilmember Alex Morris, all in favor. In continued efforts to become in good standings with the State Board of Accountants after the twenty twenty-eighteen, twenty twenty-one audit, Clerk Treasurer Melissa Copeland presented the town council with two quote slash contracts to capital assessment management. One was from Kim Falco of Comprehensive Fixed Asset Solutions for a fee of seven thousand two hundred fifty dollars, and another from Mike Crowley of Clarity Capital Consulting for a fee of a hundred dollars per hour. Council President Jesse K. Senior made a motion to accept the contract from Clarity Capital Consulting, seconded by Councilmember Alex Morris, all in favor. After seeing the article in the newspaper about the Shelburne Park Board, assuming the water tower community foundation grant, the owner of the property just north of the Shelburne Ball Diamond has decided they would like to sell the property to the town of Shelburne for the cost of one dollar, a decreeance that the property would continue to be used for the Shelburne Ball Diamond slash Shelburne Replanting. Town Council President Jesse K. Senior made a motion that Clerk Treasurer Melissa Copeland begin the process of property acquisition, seconded by Alex, Councilmember Alex Morris, all in favor. Water Labor Sean Henneke has put in his two weeks' notice, and though he is still currently working, his last day to the county day. Town Manager Dustin Getchis has asked the council to open the hiring process. After a brief discussion, Councilmember Brad Cagle made a motion to put an advertisement in the newspaper to accept applications, but to table the decision if they are going to hire anyone through twenty twenty-four council, seconded by Councilmember Alex Morris, all in favor. Town Manager Dustin Getchis brought forward a quote for a new settlement for the water tower. Our current settlement is old and has been damaged in the past and often gets jammed, causing our laborers a lot of overtime to come out and fix it. The council decided to table that decision for the incoming twenty twenty-four town council. Town Manager Dustin Getchis also brought forward quotes for a generator that had the last IED inspection three years ago, and the council decided to table that decision for the incoming twenty twenty-four town council. Councilmember Alex Morris made a motion to pay an invoice to actually declare for the cost of one hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-six for I DAX training for the Shelburne Town Marshal's Office, seconded by Member, Councilmember Brad Cagle, all in favor. Councilmember Brad Cagle made a motion to accept the twenty twenty-four agreement between the town of Shelburne and the Shelburne Police Department Reserve Association Corp. for the use of the Shelburne Community Building for their weekly bingo for three hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, seconded by Councilmember John Curtis, all in favor. Council President Jesse K. Senior made a motion to pay fifty percent of the cost for the reindeer for the Discover the Magic of Donald Christmas event. It takes place on Friday, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, seconded by Councilmember Alex Morris. A motion was made by Council President Jesse K. Senior to approve the claim batches, seconded by Councilmember Alex Morris. Vote passed three, one. Councilmembers K. Senior, Morris, and Curtis, Curtis all voted yes. A motion was made by Council President Jesse K. Senior to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Alex Morris, all in favor.
Any corrections or revisions to the minutes? Minutes stands as read.
Uh, Dustin is not coming tonight, so he asked me to make this to you. This is the IED report inspections. Um, they were there on the June twenty-first. This is the like final inspection report. It is not good. They asked for a um response in thirty days. The response time for thirty days, you guys haven't bet yet, so Dustin did file a um continuance to then to um like give us another thirty days, so now the town has an additional thirty days from the date of this, which was November twenty-seventh. That emailed us to respond and to show that we are making improvements and trying to fix it. So those will be your calls. Second, Mr. Dustin, this is just for you, Jesse. This is the one twenty water project completion certificate. This needs to be signed by some of the town council.
Sign here?
Yep, and. And that's the one twenty water program is the something to do with ledge heights for water. He's working on getting it done for. Uh, next is your nevisism policy for the year. There's two of them. I'll read them both and pass them down. Annual certification of elected official to the executive of the town of Shelburne on compliance with manufiable, can't ever say that word, nevisism policy involving direct supervision. I print your name, the elected town council member of the town of Shelburne certified that I have not violated the town of Shelburne nevisism policy in hiring or supervising of I C thirty-six dash one dash two zero dot two as amended or supplemented relating to my relationship employment with the town of Shelburne, Shelburne, as further described in ordinance thirty point one-two nevisism policy. I understand that relative means spouse, parents, stepparent, child, stepchild, brother, sister, stepbrother, stepsister, niece, nephew, aunt, uncle, daughter-in-law, or son-in-law, including half-bloods and adopted children. I intend for this to be submitted to the town council president prior to the end of the calendar year. Pass those down, one for each, everyone. The second one is the certification of elected officials to the executive of the town of Shelburne in compliance with contracting policy. I blank, print your name, the elected town council member of the town of Shelburne certified that I have not amended or supplemented relating to contracts of my relatives, business interests, or town of Shelburne as further described in ordinance thirty point one-two nevisism policy. I understand that relative means my spouse, parents, stepparent, child, stepchild, brother, sister, stepbrother, stepsister, niece, nephew, aunt, uncle, daughter-in-law, or son-in-law, including half-bloods and adopted children. I intend for this to be submitted to the town council president prior to the end of the calendar year. And date, sign, and permit.
You don't want those papers? She's asking her to sign them?
No, I ain't signed mine yet. I'll get to you by the end of the evening.
All right. Next will be um, town of Shelburne, any other resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash twenty-eight dash oh one. Resolution allowing additional appropriations, whereas it has been determined it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget now therefore. Be it resolved by the town council of the town of Shelburne, Solomon County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund names and for the purposes specified subject to law of government use. Fund name, general fund category three, fund number one one oh one. Amount requested sixty-five thousand dollars. Community building fund twenty-five oh one. Amount requested five thousand. Opioids settlement restricted twenty-two fifty-seven, fund number. Amount requested thirteen hundred dollars. Opioid settlement unrestricted, fund number twenty-two fifty-six. Amount requested seven oh five. Park and recreation, fund number twenty-two oh four. Amount requested eighteen hundred dollars. Edit fund, fund number forty-four thirty-six, seventy thousand dollars. Do we pass and adopt on the twentieth day of December twenty twenty-three via vote of blank in favor of blank and against? I'll pass that down, sorry. Yep, yeah.
I'll give a quick look at that first before I ask the motion.
I forgot last year's copy, just in case they.
We do that up here. It's done. It's done.
Here's last year's copy in case they want to.
Yep.
Are these funds that's.
What if they were appropriated too?
So when your opioid money came in, like we didn't have it appropriated in the budget because it wasn't here. So you obviously printed it. So then at the end of the year, it says negative appropriation because nothing was ever appropriated. So all you do is go in and add that we spent back and add additional appropriations. So whatever you do of budget, you like choose.
So it's not being appropriated to something different than what it was usually.
No, that's the money that was already spent. That's not any, that's not any new money. That's the money that's already been spent. So those are the exact amounts of the, what you received and spent with your appropriation. Same with like the park board, like it says eighteen hundred. So we don't appropriate any for the park board because the town doesn't give the park board one penny for a budget. But this year we sold those ghosts and those Christmas light things, so we were able to raise money to be able to turn our news for our events. We spent eighteen hundred dollars on those for our events, which I think one would think is driven too, but um, we didn't appropriate any of that money because again, we don't budget that into it because we don't have any money. The town doesn't give us any money for that. So it'll be the same next year, so your opioids will stay zero. And if you get any opioid money, we'll just have to add in additional appropriations. Which I think, I think now the town.
Accept that.
Unrestricted and then the restricted goes to the county or vice versa. I can't remember which, but.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Alex, make the motion to accept it. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Next is contract with, uh, guilty. Next, we've got two contracts to go over. The first one is from H W C Engineering. I will pass it down. Can you guys hold it over? The redevelopment commission has already voted to approve it, but it comes to you guys now for final approval. It is for, you'll see a map on page. Like the third to last page. It is for the side of the community building here. Turning this all ADA compliant. Um, doing the double doors with the sidewalk here. You'll see handicap parking. That's all of it. They'll do everything like they did with these parking lots. They'll do the um bidding out, everything, so. And I did tell H W C that, you know, I didn't know if you guys were going to approve or push to the next town council, so um it's whatever you guys decide. I just, my job is to do whatever.
This is just for the draft plans to do this?
No, this is for the entire project. You should see a detail. There should be a detailed um price list.
Where the map is at?
I think so. I think they're right before or after the map. Um, but it's like, from my understanding, it's everything. So they'll bid out the job, kind of like how they do with our community crossings. Um, they'll bid out, they'll put the advertisements on the paper. You'll still, you with the redoubt, we'll still get the bids and still open them, but then the bids will go to H W C. Just like how Ron does with C C and G. They'll go through the bids, make sure the bids are legit. And then I guess they don't necessarily pick the bids, but they give their recommendations on which bids to pick. So it's basically exactly how they do with C C and G. It's just.
Those are just the contract pieces?
Correct. And I think um, I don't know if it's in that, but there's a list of everything that they, there's a couple of things the town will have to do and joint just put a box in where they're gonna have to move. Um, but for the most part, it's, it might feel like a pretty simple project to do outside of the community building. And I think it has start date, not going until like, I want to say May of the year, so it's not a, it's not a super quick thing.
Personally, I think I'll push it to the next board. They're gonna be the ones that have to deal with it. On what everybody else thinks, but I definitely send it over to the board that's gonna have to do the bidding and anything else. Or definitely bids and high grade.
No, sounds good.
The assignment memo or something that you're not want. I'll make that into a motion.
So the motion's table on show twenty twenty-four board?
Yes, second.
Second.
You second.
Motion made, send on favor?
All right.
All right. Next is a contract with local government resources. This is the company that I've been using since I started. Actually, it was before I started. Uh, Jane uses it to help with the budget. I'll pass that down. That's just to continue her services for next year. Uh, well, she charges her oxygen hour.
Okay, yeah.
Um, and if anyone has any questions, I'll pass out the latest invoice. So from June fifth to December eighteenth, I, three hundred and twenty dollars was her entire bill. So I don't use her often, but what I need her, it's nice to have her to make sure that I'm doing everything by the book, even if it's not easy to go. So no matter, just pass that down.
Does the reading of my bill?
Yes, sir. I probably have that was Alex's farthest I've tried to figure out.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
That's your symbol, you said. I have to sign it.
I do, it doesn't matter.
Motion made on the table, you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Yeah, looks like all in favor?
Next. Is your salary ordinance. I'm gonna pass it down. I have, table on the front is last year's salary ordinance. On the back is this year's. I, it's got some scribbles from more than the math, but I left it that way. You guys can see the difference between the two years. Do you want me to read everything from front to back beginning to end while you're reviewing? Or do you want me to just? Ordinance twenty twenty-three, oh, I got two, so I'm just. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash twenty-eight dash oh one. Ordinance fixing the wages of the town marshal and employees of the town of Shelburne, Solomon County, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-four. Whereas the town of Shelburne, Solomon County, Indiana is a town of a third class having a, can never say this word, men's, 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 a pound. Own water utility, stormwater, and sewage utility. Now therefore, let it be your gain by the town council, the town of Shelburne, Solomon County, Indiana, that the salaries of the below identified officers beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty-four shall be as follows. Dollars. Clerk Treasurer, twenty twenty thou- twenty-two thousand per year to be paid sixteen thousand five hundred per year from the water utility of the town of Shelburne, Solomon County, Indiana, forty-four hundred per year from the sewer utility of the town of Shelburne, Solomon County, Indiana, and eleven hundred dollars per year from the general fund, making a total of twenty-two thousand per year. Insurance for the bits, health fourteen thousand five sixty-nine and sixty-eight. Nentle six thirty-one oh eight, vision twenty-four, twenty-four dollars and twenty-four cents, life seventy, seven hundred and seventy dollars forty cents. Total insurance for the bits fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-five and forty dollars and seventeen thousand. Equals a salary of thirty-two thousand nine ninety-five forty. Town council seventy-two hundred per year, so you paid eighteen hundred per council member per year from the general fund, two thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars, ninety, nine hundred eighty-four dollars from the sewer funds, and three thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars from the water funds of the town of Shelburne, Solomon County, Indiana, as provided by law. Town attorney, eight hundred dollars per year to be paid from the general fund of the town of Shelburne, Solomon County, Indiana, per year, and two seventy-five per hour for court proceedings and court filing fees incurred with the funds, paid one-third from general, one-third from water, and one-third for sewer. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash twenty-eight dash oh two, an ordinance fixing the wages of town marshal and employees of the town of Shelburne, Solomon County, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-four. Be it ordained by the town council of the town of Shelburne, Indiana. Indiana, section one, that from and after January first, twenty twenty-four, the following officers and employees of the town of Shelburne, Indiana shall receive the following wages. I'm gonna skip the part where it breaks it down, each percentage from each fund, but I'll go through. The following salary and wage breakdowns are paid to one individual as follows. Office manager, twenty thousand two seventy-five seventy-six per year. Town marshal, thirty-four thousand four seventy-eight seventy-one per year. Janitor, fifteen dollars per hour. Town manager, thirty-three fifteen per hour. Utility foreman, twenty fifteen per hour. Water labor, eighteen dollars and two cents per hour. Water labor, two, fifteen dollars per hour. Water labor, three, fifteen dollars per hour. Billing clerk, sixteen seventeen per hour. Part-time billing clerk, eleven oh two per hour. Custodian, twenty-two fifty per hour. They, this is all the same. Do you want your vacations and holidays?
No.
So I'll just break down, so you guys, you have both copies, but um custodian, janitor, and part-time billing clerk were not changed. Town marshal, town manager, utility foreman, water labor one, which is still in the water labor we have, all got a three percent increase. Uh, office manager, which is my position, uh, and my clerk treasurer position, I cut twenty percent of my pay from that. Um, I found during my investigation that the Shelburne clerk treasurer was getting paid, it was like for the county, judge, judge, trust, keeper's share, Shelburne clerk, Shelburne clerk. That's crazy. So we cut that twenty percent. And then, like I said, Matt, Dustin, Joel, and Liz, and Sean, all got a three percent raise.
So what's the clerk treasurer's wages, thirty percent?
So twenty-two thousand per year, and we got written up in the um audit because the, so the town council, how you guys get paid, sixty percent comes from the general fund. Twenty percent comes from sewer. Twenty percent comes from water. That's how the clerk treasurer should be. Clerk treasurer has never got a penny from the town. Jay said it was because they couldn't afford it. So we have to show, just like with IED, we have to show that we're making an effort to go through the audit and say, hey, we screwed up here. We've got to now fix this. So it's only five percent, but we're paying out of the town clerk treasurer five percent just to show we're making an effort. Next year, we're gonna have to increase that, so we're gonna have to figure out where we can cut some funds to like fix that a little bit, but for now, um, state board accounts of five percent is enough to show that we're making an effort to fix the audit mistakes and move forward, so.
I like the, making motion to amend the salary ordinance to remove the office manager's position.
Office? I'll second it. Who's the, who's the office?
No, it means that's what Jay did for thirty-eight years.
Why do you do that?
I think it's, it's a waste of money. The state board of council said that we need to cut back. We have too many employees, so.
We have never, ever done anything to do like this. Now you got, you guys.
I got a motion on the floor.
I'm not, I'm not talking to you there.
Well, you can talk if you want, but we got a motion on the floor.
I'm gonna talk before I do. You're not depressed, so please, you don't think, now, we are leaving. You have done, you guys have voted her and, and done everything. Yes, you have. Oh, yes, you have. Oh, yes, Brad, you have.
No, we haven't.
Yes, you have. This is wrong. This is wrong.
How much money did you cut out of your salary just now?
Twenty percent.
Which is what?
That's wrong.
How much money?
I'm, I'm telling you.
Ten thousand?
They've been picking, they've been picking on her ever since she took this office. She's doing a great job and she has has proven herself that she can do the job and wait. I need done. The pit bull of this, this town voted her in. You don't like.
We're not voting her in.
She's gonna make the name before. This is all, you never have, why do you want to?
She is the clerk treasurer.
Why do you want to?
And we're done, done with office manager's position. We got a motion on the floor, and we got a second.
No, I didn't ask for a second. You're not.
Already got a second.
Discussion proceeds go down.
Motion's been made, second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Not stupid as ever.
Was there two janitor positions?
If you're trying to cut money, why doesn't everybody on the board take, take up?
Was there two, two janitor positions?
This has never happened.
No way.
This has never, ever happened. This is the first time, and God knows when. Well, never has. This is, this is the first time. It's all because.
I have a question. Would you have voted on that if it was Jay sitting there?
Oh, hell.
Would you two have voted on that?
He got a raise.
You know.
They put that, kind of like the three positions.
Sorry, um. Sorry, um.
No, it was advertised and.
No, it wasn't.
Yes, it was.
It wasn't in paper.
It wasn't in paper, and I called him this day. Nobody called. Neither of you.
That's a legal meeting.
That's a legal meeting.
Not like you showed up, but then you getting dropped off by your girlfriend.
It's also.
And it's all.
It's off the coast and indoors. It doesn't even.
It does. I called state board of council and that's fine. Just so you know, what happened in former school is about to happen over now.
Cause they ain't gonna get no better next year either.
Jesse, it's fine. We've already talked. We knew that was coming because people keep their mouths shut.
Well, well, you know me, I can't keep my mouth shut.
All right, so can we add a motion to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve, so we can make sure the rest of the guys get their raises?
Well, I don't know whether they're gonna cut that too. Let's make sure. Let me look at it.
I think a three percent.
Any question, every answer. Someone back there asked if there was two custodian or some positions. I didn't hear if there was an answer to that.
Was there two custodian positions?
Yeah, who you talking about? Custodian and a janitor.
What's the difference?
Add them up together. If it's the same person, that's um roughly fifteen and twenty-two, or I'm at the square inch, it was thirty-seven dollars an hour, but I don't know now.
What's the difference between a janitor and a custodian? And why do we need two?
Go ahead, Brad, I'll let you talk.
I don't know, but we have to.
You do. You have one person that does those jobs.
But what's the difference?
What's the difference? We get two different.
One is cleaning the water office, someone.
One's making twenty-two fifty.
Cleaning the community building.
And janitor.
You get paid one job, two jobs, the other.
Why do you have two different people? Why do you have two people doing the same job at two different locations?
We have one person doing those jobs.
I think we should.
So do they? Do they claim that thirty-some dollars an hour?
No, so when they work, like when they clean here, it's like seventeen, fifteen hour or whatever. There's only clean there. It's twenty. So it depends on where they're working and what they get paid.
Why is that? So they, they don't get paid for the job. They get paid depending on where they.
I'm gonna make a motion to accept the uh salary orders with amendments made tonight.
That doesn't make any sense though, where we came.
You've got two, so let's do the first one first. But your first one is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh dash twenty-eight dash oh.
How long have we been doing that?
That, that one doesn't have.
Okay, okay.
That one doesn't have one. That's, that's, that's not office manager.
That's just one employee type.
That's the clerk treasurer, town council, town attorney.
Yes.
Your mayor, your mayor? Alex, for a second, now.
What is it?
Ordinance twenty twenty.
Are we doing this one or that?
Twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash twenty-eight dash oh one, an ordinance fixing the wages of town marshal and employees. So it comes in two sections. This is clerk treasurer, town council, town attorney.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
So Brad, will Brad make the motion?
I'll make it. Second.
Second, Alex. Do we have, will you do your?
Oh, okay. Motion made, second, all in favor?
All right.
Twenty-three dash, so I'll rewrite this down and we can take it. Okay. Okay, and your next one, you're gonna have to make pencil marks on initials too. And you'll need to, I guess if you're out here, you're gonna hire tomorrow to do the office manager drop asylum, you know, since he just fired. An ordinance fixing the wages of town marshal and employees, ordinance twenty-three dash twelve dash twenty-eight dash oh two. Here you go, sir, for your motion.
What's this one?
Uh, well, you'll have to scribble off and say just fired by the position and say no.
So what we gonna do? We gotta find someone, the office manager now.
How about the pestilencia? Could she do, I mean, that too? You know, I mean, power leak, and she'll have three things to do.
I just don't know why we're not.
No, that's a good idea.
She was here.
Why all this?
Here, come on, come on, come on. How is our janitor position, custodian position not nevism?
Not what?
That's good.
What'd you say? How is it not nevism?
I didn't harm. I didn't harm.
That's not an epithism policy, that's the same thing.
I'm certified.
Well, I don't think that's like an epithism policy, that.
No, it doesn't say hire, it says supervise.
I don't supervise, I mean.
Who doesn't, that you don't have an office manager to do it anymore?
Who is the janitor?
Well, I don't wanna be here either.
That's because.
I don't know what that was.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm just getting, catch my breath.
No, I'm just waiting on you, I don't wanna interrupt. Um, are we to, are we to cut in the old wounds? Who is, who's serving two positions at once? What is this custodian and janitor, who are there?
Uh, who is this one?
Just one judge, and who are there?
Brad, he was talking to him.
Okay.
Oh.
Does that count as a?
Yes.
And that's the big point of contention.
Who, who, who signed off on that contract?
There's not a contract, there's not a point.
How, how would they have?
Employed by the office manager.
It's not.
It was hired by the office manager.
So this is how, you didn't hire passing, you didn't vote on or out passing?
No.
This doesn't break that with this one.
So, so was this, was this position in the paper, like everybody?
We have the minutes, we have the minutes, we're working the past minutes, I guarantee it.
Yeah, I assume I was unaware that there's two different positions.
I'm gonna check the minutes.
Well, I also wanted to ask about that while I have you here. We don't have enough over the minutes, correct?
I'm talking about the minutes in the, how she got hired.
Right.
I have, I have a que, I have a question, my man.
What year is that?
I, I'm gonna say, well, Cassie, why haven't I worked here?
It's not hers.
Five years?
It's not her that's employed.
It's not her, it doesn't matter.
Then why is she using the, then why is she using the town credit cards? If she's not employed with the town, why is she using the town credit cards?
How long? Five years?
She signed them out.
I like it, but.
If she's not an employee, then that's a huge problem.
Who gave it to her?
Huh?
Who would have gave it to her?
Oh.
I don't give any credit, don't look at me. No, they. After probably, right, I said your guys can get a raise.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for it.
Now you need to be clear in this motion, Alex, what you're motioning.
Uh, I'm making a motion to accept the salary ordinance with the amendments that we put in.
And you need to specify what those amendments are.
Uh, they eliminated the office manager position.
We told them that.
No, they didn't tell them, they made motions, I mean, yes, they made, they made the decision to remove the office manager, but not amending on here, so I'm gonna have that in the minutes. Okay? You have a second on that?
Motion's been made, it's a second. I'm not gonna vote.
You make a motion?
I already made it, yeah, I'll second it.
Well, it happened, um. I'm not gonna be talking. I ain't gonna, three since with the other glory, what'd you say about office manager this? Everybody worked with this.
Yeah, so they haven't gotten to approve this ordinance, to be able to give everybody their raises, but I wanted to make sure that he specified what the amendments that he made, cause they went through and scribbled any initials, by the way, they went through and scribbled what they want here, alright, so it's yours.
Well, I don't wanna.
I'll get it, I gave somebody the official, I think he.
Okay, motion's been made, second, we.
No, this is not it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
It's right there, from Brad. Yep. There should be three pages, page one, page two, page three. Page one and page two are where you're gonna make your amendments, scribble it out, initial, which I think is what Jesse has right here, page one.
This is from the overtime here.
Yeah, like all those together, it's two pages. So this is their amendment, they need to initial the changes they're making. On page two, you also need to make changes, where you're scribbling out office manager and initial it, and then page three is where everybody signs.
Well, I got, yeah, okay, yeah, wait, wait, wait.
How many key positions are in the water office?
Huh?
How many key positions are in the water office? Not equal positions.
Okay.
Office manager, which got taken away, janitor, custodian, billing clerk, part-time billing clerk.
Why, why are there two?
Why are there two options?
Billing clerks.
Uh, billing clerk is Liz, part-time is like Sharon or Cookie, like when they come. I cut fifteen dollars from that.
They're gonna be back.
But now they have an office tomorrow, isn't that what?
Don't they, we could be called, we have no bad luck. Hell, I'm gonna have a problem until, until Sunday.
Don't get your grip, cause if you get your.
It's unclear about something again, for the custodian position, it's not Cassie that was hired, it's her husband? Is that right? Cause I'm confused on this.
I wasn't here during that, so that's.
I think we employ her husband, that's what it says.
Her husband was hired for the position, but she does all the work for it, is that right?
And it was brought up to the board too. I was on it about five, six years ago.
So what kind of answers to that?
Just go back in the minutes, if it's in the minutes. I'm not saying that.
Yeah, I'll decide.
I'm gonna get a bite, my, while I think about it.
You can go as long as, Paul says I have customers. I wouldn't, I wouldn't discuss that. Okay, I'm not saying. Uh, plans are floating around, those. Oh, I need, yeah, I need.
Where's that final report to this month?
Where's that paper, the three?
Yeah, well.
Final report?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You've had the back there.
Yeah, I have that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I, if you come tomorrow, I'm gonna order, sorry, I was like. I didn't think about it, I'm sorry. Uh, okay, so that's. Now, but if you do look in there, you'll see you got the white cop car paid off, so it's now ours. Uh, it's paid off, it's ours, and the backhoe got paid off this month, so we now own it.
Around the backhoe.
Now that it's paid off, I get the credit. No, negative.
Uh, yeah, the back, so the backhoe, when they got the loan for the backhoe in twenty twenty-one, it was, uh, January twenty twenty-two, it was like seventeen K was the payment, and then December of twenty twenty-three, it was like forty, you'll see on there, forty-six thousand, forty-seven thousand, so it's a deal, and then, so. Now it'll probably break.
The car department needs some drywall to fix their ceiling, which shouldn't be two months, I make a motion that we, uh, appropriate some funds.
How many sheets, I might probably don't know. I'm not gonna open the chapter, I got one.
Can I get a quote?
I have a quote too.
How much? Drywall, drywall ceiling over there.
I don't know, like, probably like six, seven, one sheet now, maybe for it.
We're just gonna have it.
We can get it out, those, we can get it out.
State board of cash, did we add that before? I'm not gonna.
They put a ceiling in for their ceiling.
Or anything, yes.
I will get a contractor.
Okay.
Sign out on fire department, Liz, they notified her, they found termites yesterday, found termites yesterday, so I think Alex will notify, and your board's supposed to figure out, maybe treated or something.
Yeah, I need the phone number for that, I don't know if Liz has an opportunity to get it.
Is it Al's, I mean, hot pets?
Is that who it is?
Mm-hmm, environment.
Okay, yeah, that's what she told me, okay, as long as that's who it is, I can only get it done.
They'll come and service it, I think he just needed to know when you were like ready for them to come.
Yeah, I can handle that.
Wasn't I writing a motion, Brad, there, oh, that was just, so no fire department.
I can pick up that, that time report tomorrow then to.
Yep. I'll be in the morning for the. I don't.
Well, they're looking at that paper, moving on, anybody else got anything out there you wanna say?
I got a lot to say.
Just kidding.
Sir?
About this that's going on now, or?
What's that?
About busting on that?
Anything, anything.
Yeah, I have a question about, uh, I got a water bill for like six hundred dollars per second, I use sixty thousand gallons of water in one month, because I had a water leak. And the paper that I signed, my, got my water, said that they did adjust for a water leak one time a year. Liz is saying that you guys don't allow to do that again.
We did, we did away with that a few years ago.
Well, I missed, I missed paper three months ago, it's still a paper.
Well, well, that would be something interesting.
You, you do have it? Yeah.
I have four water bills that I have, which are sixty hundred gallons a month, but one month I use fifty-seven thousand, six hundred gallons.
It says on that one? And when is this, uh, when is this assigned? Oh, I guess we see.
You guys just moved in this summer, right?
That need to be revised.
No, we'll say, we, no, we can't, I don't know.
It says on there, it says I'm not gonna sign it, I forgot it.
I put it first, my bullet, one time a second, every second, twenty-four hours a day, if you got thirty days, you're not using sixty thousand gallons.
Well, why do you save your contract there? Um, I'll make a motion that we. Huh? What?
That is not anything.
Why did you say, why did you say that to her?
I did, I did. Oh, no, I did not staple that to that, no way.
What are we getting at?
First of all, no paper.
Asking, asking what you get in the paper schools, and I.
Sir? Who gave you that paper right there?
Liz, then? She even wrote on the bottom, my first bill would be in November.
They got the water in September, about seven, nine, ten.
It's a writing on the bottom. That is not my writing, I have service.
Eddie, Jesse.
Okay.
I do have a link recently, yes, that's what I'm saying, Eddie, my bill isn't allowed to be adjusted, because it's the new.
Right.
So I don't know if that's lawful or not.
What did you say?
We added three hundred dollar.
Yeah, that one just said, well, there.
Right. Yes, that's what I'm saying, we can go over more, Jesse.
Oh, yeah.
It's a debt.
Do you recognize this? Do you recognize this?
Oh, yeah. Well, I can't adjust it because of the dumb noises, and so you can't adjust.
I understand that, that's why I'm talking to them. I mean, anybody with a modicum of common sense or intelligence knows that I did not use sixty thousand gallons of water in one month.
We did it, that's state, we're gonna.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, adjust this.
I second.
Motion's been made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we go back to the Justin Ivan?
Can we, uh?
Check our paper.
Can we just, uh, double check?
Like yesterday.
Make sure that none of them have it on there.
The town will not fix it, but I.
Look at the contract, just to make sure.
Somebody else?
Matt? Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, you were looking at the.
Um, do we?
I have a question.
As you're excited to, like, did you know what to adjust, because there's certain.
Three month average.
I have a question about, um, hey, I, I mean, I'm a little bit October, it's in the minutes that there are no October minutes, or.
There are minutes, they just went on.
Right, so those are not available with the public, because they were not approved by the council?
I don't know, I put them on the website, and I, whenever I, state board council, I upload them to the BLGF website, so.
Okay, so there is a way in which the public can still look?
Yes.
So there is some for prosperity, if it was not signed by.
Correct, and I put a, state board council told me to put a note on there explaining why they went out signing, so if you go to our website and you click it, at the bottom, it's like, it basically was that today, described.
So that makes one question, the public will know exactly why it wasn't signed, alright?
Yes, yep.
And then, I can, I mean, I want a copy of the, uh, the HWC engineering proposal as well, it'll have to be right now, at your convenes.
I'll make a note.
And then also, uh, a little bit of additional appropriations, and then I also wanna take a look at that salary ordinance system as well.
Um, you know that they didn't approve the HWC seating, right?
No, I, okay, I would love to ask that, because that is for the next term, I'm figuring.
Right, yep. The, so I guess I should clarify, the redevelopment committee voted to accept it, but then they got it here, and then they decided.
Right, so the town has a time to say.
Correct, yeah.
The board's about to redevelop the investment, okay.
And, uh, what else did he ask for? What else did you say, HWC salary ordinance and what?
Uh, salary ordinance, and then also a little bit of additional appropriation, I want, I want to ask you about some of those, when you got on that, and, uh, other than that, thank you for letting me in there.
Matt, anything?
Alright, uh, so police department, hundred and eight calls, it's determined to clean November the first, and then the third, and have a three point six call for May, of course, the, uh, of course, some get back, and we gotta go to the back. Alright, uh, so police department, approximately twenty-five calls have assessed this between November the first and November the thirtieth. Uh, approximately twenty-seven hours of service, um, in the month of November, and then it's broken down into the hours, and then the reserve is broken down into their hours as well. Uh, and again, caliber, four hundred and eight calls, no equipment upgrades from report, although I just didn't find out that our cars paid off, you know, typically in the past, with trade. Um, no current training, new for the year, all done, um. As always, working with the, uh, community, um, and a part of the media, although it's not with the Shelton Police Department report, I would have never taken it off, you know, immediately, you already know. Um, the Shelton Police Reserve Association did acquire a grant to operate some ground up, um, a little over seven thousand dollars, what we're gonna do with that, um, grant money, is we're gonna hook a, uh, generator to the community building, um, so that in the winter time, in the summertime, we can use the community building for heating and cooling station, for the residents, if they find themselves out of power again, and of course, with our ten thirty-three program, we have the ability to go with it with the Humvees and all that stuff in the winter time, or other vehicles as well. So I think that'd be a real good thing, and definitely workload in here. Um, the grant is for seven thousand, two hundred fifty-nine, two hundred and seven, um, luckily, uh, I missed the table, um, after I deal with the. No, I didn't, I just asked him, he was happy to do it, um, said he was gonna help us out, he was, uh, he didn't help me help us out, and call it all, and get it all put together, so I appreciate that very much. Um, so the twenty twenty-four to four is, uh, fifty thousand, five hundred and fifty-two miles, uh, Chevy Tahoe, uh, is four forty-five, five seventy-one. Um, before doors, uh, forty-three, five hundred and two, I hope it's paid off, it's only running down, we'll probably need a new one. Uh, so the Humvee, not, not even flying yet, alright, so the Humvee, seventeen thousand, four hundred and three miles, uh, hey, now trailer, trailer obviously don't put miles on, right? Um, and then also, so I have a question, um, that a motion be made, that we bring back, um, cones as a reserve deputy. Uh, he went through the process of the bylaws over, we've had the interview, which involved, uh, council of purpose and council meeting, we'll sit in on the interview as well. And I just ask that a motion be made, if we bring back a reserve deputy.
I make a motion to bring Dylan Jones back as a reserve.
How many departments would that make you?
Excuse me?
How many departments would that make you? Half.
One, two, three, four. three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, so, well under the ordinance.
That are all in pink.
Yep, all in pink, but well under the ordinance.
Motion's been made, second? Okay, motion's been made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Wow, that's fast.
Alright, uh, and then any questions for me or the nurse?
Yeah, that's.
How's CD intervention stuff going?
It's good, so, I mean, we're riding along, um, if, uh, you know, any chance to get the, uh, chance to do it, we do. Um, I think most of you know what the intervention is, so it's where we can actually, uh, assign, or like give people on the side of the road, our deputies have the ability and the software on the computers, where they can, um, set up, uh, like recovery appointments, adoptive appointments, or things like that, for mental health and all that, we can actually do referrals right from the road, so we still do that, it's, um, as long as the grant from Nashville keeps, like, continuing to pay for, so, um, hopefully, uh, that stays the intention.
John, you have anything?
No, sir.
Alex?
No.
Brad?
I need claims, and I need, um, all their notices and things, I have to.
All the papers that you signed and moved out.
I never did before.
You signed them last year.
I'll make a motion to accept the claims.
Well, you made a motion, yeah, okay, thank you. Motion's been made for?
I'll say it.
Sorry, handle the motion.
Motion's been made, the second, all in favor?
Sorry. Can I have a second?
No. Alex, first.
All in favor? How is? Anything else?
I think she forgot.
Come on, quick, anybody else? I wanna thank you for.